I'd like to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of August 3, 2020, to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, Scott Billhurst, Vice President, I move all up of the agenda while the public can accept the public forum.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll take the two items under Old Business first. First one is the decision regarding proposed ordinance amendment to chapters 272 and 273. Render a decision on amendments to chapters 272 and 273 of the Town of Hopkinton zoning ordinance requested by Hopkinton Town Council Sylvia Thompson for property owned by Atlantic Solar LLC, 260 West Exchange Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02903, and Atlantic Control Systems, Inc., 318 Drybridge Road, North Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02852, for property located at Zero Main Street, Hopkinton, Rhode Island, identified as plat 7, lot 32, plat 10, lot 87, and plat 11, lot 35, in RFR 80 Zone, regarding an amendment relative to one of the conditions in each ordinance setting the amount of the cash decommissioning bond for the proposed PSES project to be constructed on the said property by striking the phrase of $25,000 per megawatt AC and substituting therefore the phrase "to be determined by the planning board." The public hearing was held and closed on July 20, 2020. Sylvia, do you want to say anything before we kind of vote on this, I guess?
Well, I'll tell you what I will do since I think it's a simple matter. It'll either go up or down. So therefore, I move that we amend chapter 272 and 273 of the Town of Hopkinton zoning ordinance for property owned by Atlantic Solar LLC, 220 West Exchange Street, Providence, Rhode Island, and Atlantic Control Systems, Inc., 318 Drybridge Road, North Kingstown, Rhode Island, for property located at Zero Main Street, Hopkinton, Rhode Island, identified as plat 7, lot 32, plat 10, lot 87, and plat 11, lot 35, that will strike the phrase, quote, of $25,000 per megawatt AC, end of quote, and substitute the phrase "to be determined by the planning board." Thank you.
Seconded.
Councilman Hurst.
Second. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any further comments by the council?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Hopkinton's planning board wrote its own regulations for solar on commercial property by right. And even with Mr. Lambier and the solicitor's advice, they tried to bypass their own ordinance as projects come forward. This includes decommissioning, deforestation, and that back. The project is not by right, but was approved by council after much discussion and thought. It is not reasonable to backtrack once the vote has been made as it sets precedence and creates an unstable lack of trust between citizens, council, and developers, putting the town at risk. The $25,000 per megawatt is appropriate for this project, and I would like to see it remain. Thank you.
Mr. President, Scott Billhurst, Vice President, I believe that, as I've stated publicly, I could have went either way when this was originally proposed. But I think in order to strengthen a rapport the Town Council has with the community at large in regard to solar, and it's a very hot item, it's the hottest item in Hopkinton, and I think that a lot of the main criticism of the present council deals with solar. I think it will heal some wounds. I think the landowner was agreeable to it. And I think it will be helpful dealing with this issue and benefit the council and the community at large because people have confidence in our planning board. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Barbara. Sharon, do you have any words?
I totally support this recommended amendment. I think that it is very appropriate, and I think it just makes everything uniform, uniform treatment. And I do think that the planning board is the right place to put this decision. So I totally agree with it. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. You know, from my perspective, as I mentioned at the hearing, I understand why Sylvia brought it forward. The decommissioning does fall under the purview of the planning board, but it's also allowable for a counselor to make a decommissioning as part of their motion to approve the project, which Barbara did. So I voted for the project, I voted for that motion, and I'm going to continue with that to be consistent. But obviously, I know that the decommissioning does, again, fall through the purview of the planning board, but I'm going to be consistent and stand by my vote that included the $25,000. Okay. No other further comments? I guess we need a motion?
We have a motion. We have a second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. No further comments? I guess all those in favor of changing the or amending this verbiage in this particular item, vote by saying your name and then yes.
Scott Billhurst, yes.
Sharon Davis, yes.
Sylvia, yes.
All those not in favor, say your name and no.
Barbara, no.
Frank, no. The motion passes. Okay. Thank you. Next item under Old Business is the decision regarding the proposed ordinance amendment to chapter 229. Render a decision on an amendment to chapter 229 of the Hopkinton Code of Ordinances requested by Hopkinton Town Council President Frank Landolfi, specifically Article 1, Section 19-2, B1A of Chapter 19 Taxation. Article 1 entitled "When Interest Waived." The proposed amendment would correct a typographical error in the reference to Rhode Island general laws found in said Section 19-2B1, where it reads Rhode Island general laws, section 44-5.8, and substitute that with that citation, Rhode Island general laws, section 44-5-8.1. In addition, the proposed amendment, if enacted, would add the clause or place of business after the word residence and before the phrase of the taxpayer found in Section 19-2, B1A of Chapter 229. The purpose of this portion of the proposed amendment would be to extend to taxpayer-owned places of business the opportunity to seek a waiver of payment of one quarter's worth of interest on one overdue property tax payment, subject to the same conditions currently applicable to taxpayers' personal residences. The public hearing was held and closed on July 20. So, you know, I know we had the hearing. Again, one of the business owners in town, when I was patronizing their establishment, had complained about having a tough time during this COVID-19 situation, and they had to pay an interest penalty on their tax bill. That's very, very substantial. So I got to thinking that back in 2013, I had the tax interest waiver for just residences, and I felt it was appropriate now because of COVID-19 and all the devastation that all these businesses are going through with lost revenue and things of that nature, starting up late. And so I thought it was very appropriate to add the businesses on to this particular tax interest waiver program. And I think it'll help. You know, it's not a lot of money that would be lost by the town, but I think it'll certainly go a long way to extending the help that I think some of the businesses may need in town, so.
I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment to chapter 229.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further council discussion?
Yes. First of all, once again, we'd like to thank you and congratulate you, Council President Landolfi. I think this is a very positive thing during your tenure on the Town Council. I think it recognizes and disputes strongly the belief that some have that Hopkins is anti-business. I think it shows that we're willing to work with people, and we understand that we all have financial difficulties, either individually or as businesses in town. So I think a lot of people, as time goes by, will really appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
I have to say I concur with Scott.
Thank you, Barbara.
So do I.
Thanks, Sharon.
I have a question. Frank?
Yes, Sylvia.
The motion as read, I just wanted to, I mean, Kevin didn't pop in real fast. Is it okay to leave the motion as simple as that? We didn't have to make it part of all the... Okay, fine, okay.
Yeah, it is, because Frank read it in its entirety already, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, if there's no other further council comment, I guess we have a motion made and seconded, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, just say your name and yes. And all those not in favor, say your name and no.
Scott Billhurst, yes.
Sharon Davis, yes.
Barbara Capalvo, yes.
Sylvia Thompson, yes.
Frank Landolfi, yes. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the council's support. I really appreciate it. I'll let the person that gave me the motivation to put this forward, I'll let her know, and I'm sure she'll be pleased. Thanks. Thank you for the support, folks. Okay. Next up, we'll tackle the boards and commissions. First up is discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Richard Prescott to the Historic District Commission.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Number two, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Marty Leese to the Juvenile Hearing Board.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Number three, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to reappoint Tom Thompson, or Tommy, as Barbara calls him, to the Land Trust Board of Trustees.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, number four, accept the resignation of Dorothy Gardner from the Chair Audit Subcommittee.
So moved with regret.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And lastly, accept the resignation of Sylvia Algeert from the Juvenile Hearing Board.
So moved.
With regret.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last but not least, the consent agenda. Approve Town Council meeting minutes of July 20, 2020. Ratify and approve the 8th Local Declaration of Emergency from August 3 to August 31, 2020.
I just move, I fully meetings of July 20. And it's just, Horace B. Wright, it said Horace. I talked to Lisa today, and she'd made the correction already. So with that correction, I'm, to the Town Council meetings of July 20, 2020, I move to accept the minutes with that correction for July 20, 2020.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, now we've got the two hearings left. We're going to start with the Class C license before we hit to the main item on the agenda tonight. So the Class C liquor license, I need a motion to sit as licensing board?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Class C liquor license. Open a remote hearing on an application for a Class C liquor license filed by Norbert Anse Jr., 63 Cedarwood Lane, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, 02832, for property he owns located at 999 Main Street, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, 02832, identified as Assessor's Plats 27, Lot 102, a neighborhood business zone to allow for paint and SIP art classes. Now, I've got to get to see if Norbert and/or Sherri is out there. If Norbert and Sherri are out there, please raise your hand. They must be out there. Oh. Oh, there's Sherri, okay. Sherri, can you hear me?
We can. Can you hear us?
Yes, okay. You're with Norbert?
Yes, I'm right here, Frank.
We are here.
Okay, okay. All right, great. All right, great. So Lisa, all fees paid and notices posted and all that good stuff, right?
The notices have been posted. The fees will be billed out. That's a new fee that was established by the council recently, but I'm sure that they will be paid promptly once I bill up.
Okay. All right, so yeah, Norbert and Sherri, why don't you, you know, give the council any more information you'd like to present to us tonight? And then we'll open it up for any council comments and anyone out in the public that has to weigh in, whether they are for or against it, and then we'll eventually vote on it. So you have the floor.
Sure. Thank you very much, and good evening, everybody. I think pretty much most of the council has the gist of the type of business that we're trying to establish down there. I did want the council to understand that this is not a restaurant. This is not a bar or tavern. What we will be doing is art classes, craft classes. The people that will be in the establishment for any event will solely be people that have registered and paid for a class. So this is not something that will be open to the general public, in a sense. You know, you can't just have somebody walk in the streets and decide they want to sit down and have a drink. That's not what this is about. We've also recently, I got, actually, and Lisa mailbox today, I did get the retail sales permit as well as the acceptance from Hop Arts as an artist and as a stop on the 2020 Studio Trail this year.
That's great.
Is there any questions that the council might have as far as...
I have a question, Frank.
Yes, Barbara, go ahead.
I just have a question, and it was for Kevin. Could he please explain to all of us what the Class C liquor license entails?
Okay, give me a second. I just got to get the statute in front of me. Hang on. I was ready for the question of what art and SIP meant.
I can understand that without any...
I think we can figure that one out.
Yeah.
Class C, the statute, if anybody who's listening wants to look it up, is Rhode Island general laws 3-7-8. And it talks about a Class C license holder can keep for sale and sell beverages at retail at the specific location described and to deliver them only for consumption on the premises where sold. No beverages can be sold or served after 12:00 midnight or before 6:00 a.m., with a couple of exceptions. The license authorizes the holder to sell prepackaged foods prepared off the premises, but prohibits preparation and services of food cooked on the premises. It's contemplated in the statute that, you know, it's okay for potato chips, popcorn, pretzels, that kind of stuff. And that's pretty much it. It's a very limited license. So I can go, you know, I can look for more detail if you'd like, but that's pretty much it.
So Kevin, so that, it could be something that's catered?
Yeah, they can't, you know, they're not going to have a, like, a grill or a fryolator or any of that kind of thing.
But it can be catered from outside?
Yeah, I think so. You know, the statute talks about foods prepared off the premises. But they want prepackaged foods prepared and cooked off premises.
I have... Yeah, I have recently heard of other places that do this paint and SIP. It sounds like an interesting opportunity if you like art. I hope that it will be successful. I do know Mr. and Mrs. Nor...
Anse.
Yeah.
Anse.
That you have to take all of the tips classes and all the regulations?
Yes, we have done that. I've been certified with, I bartended a good portion of my adult life at different establishments, and it was a bit ironic because Frank, first, my first tip class with Frank Foberd, I was 23 years old, and I was very boudjarden at the time. And when he recertified me, you may have noticed it came through as Sherri Anse, and we had to laugh at that because he said, "Oh, no." He said, "I thought she got married again. This is your maiden name." And I said, "Yes, it is, Frank." I said, "I didn't take Anse at this point." But I've been certified on and off with Frank for quite some time. Worked at a lot of different establishments. And Kevin, as he described to you, Barbara, yeah, that is something we'd like to incorporate. We are planning a gallery area in the studio and would like to feature different local artists that they might be able to exhibit on a, you know, a solo basis where they might not get that opportunity at other places.
A revolving basis? A revolving basis? A revolving basis?
Revolving, yes. We'd like to feature maybe four to six different artists per year. Give them, you know, a month, a month and a half to have an exhibit, you know, an opening reception by invitation. And that's, yeah, as Kevin stated, we won't have any cooking facilities or anything like that on the premises. It's strictly, you can reheat prepackaged food, but we prefer to go that route, as Barbara said, for events like that, to have it catered.
So my understanding is you're both certified, and you both are experienced in this relatively small way of handling liquor?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, you all set, Barbara?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, yep. Sharon, any comments, questions for the applicant on this Class C?
I think it's going to be great. Thank you, Sharon. No, I like that. I mean, my church had one of those paintings, but no alcohol, as a fundraiser, and they're a lot of fun. They're a lot of fun to, you know, try out, try your hand out to paint. I think that you will find, a lot of people will enjoy it.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, we're very excited.
Thanks, Sharon. Scott, any questions for Norbert and Sherri on this Class C?
I know with some, I'm glad they've been resolved for the voting for this issue, and it'd be really great in the Old Drug Valley. So that's a very positive thing for downtown Old Valley, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Sylvia?
Yeah, I've got two, well, actually, three things. I need a couple of comments from Sherri or her husband, and then I've got a question for you. Sherri, could you name some of the places where you served alcohol before?
Where I've served alcohol, sure. I started off at Poncho O'Malley's many, many, many months ago in Narragansett, Turtle Soup in Narragansett. I was at the, I was actually an original member of, when the pavilion first opened, when the randos opened it, in one of the, actually, I think, I was the only bartender to go through one, two, three, four different ownerships that stayed on, that was asked to stay on through four different ownerships over there. I've done private weddings, private functions that we, Norbert and I, have been hired out for. Anything else?
No, okay. The other thing I wanted you to offer, because I've seen your report on what you plan to do, but I think tonight, perhaps, you could explain about the days that you're looking at in the parking and how you worked it out with Wes's Bakery?
Sure. Colleen West has been fantastic. They have a back parking lot that's located behind the bakery, and she's been more than accommodating with us. We're very limited to what we have on our property, but there's space in front of the bakery. As you know, they operate limited hours, and we will not be operating any hours that they're open. We're going to be more, I'd like to start off like a Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, late afternoon on Saturday, and then maybe a Saturday night class. They close at 1:00 on Sundays, so maybe a 2:00 in the afternoon class. And we have fixed up the back. We've installed new stairs. We're putting in handrails on Colleen's stairway for her. Really cleaning, lighting, cleaning up the back of the property, so it really looks nice, and you have access from that back parking lot.
Are you talking about access from behind the buildings to get to your building?
Yeah.
Or do they walk around?
There's a parking lot that's located, if you were to drive behind the bakery, she had a large parking area installed up there. And there's a set of, I think it's six, is it six stairs? I mean, six stairs that come down that will bring you to, it brings tenants access to their apartment above the bakery, and it brings you to the back of our building, which is, there's a rock retaining wall there, Sylvia. So you come down the stairs, and you would go to the left, right behind the building. It will bring you up onto a deck and bring you right to the front of the building.
That's wonderful. Okay, great, okay. The question I had for you is, I'm going to give you a scenario, and you're going to tell me how you handle it. Let's suppose you've been doing this for a while, and you find that there's a particular person who wants, who signs up, does everything right, and then as time goes by and that person keeps coming, they drink more and more, and it becomes more of a drinking thing for them. And... more of a drinking thing for them, and they get loud, or they are a little tipsy and whatever, and it bothers the other art. And, and so you start to get a couple of complaints. How would you deal with that?
Well, if it's somebody that's coming to that meeting class, it's something that I would have no problem speaking to them about on a personal basis. To look at this, you have to be able to distinguish the difference. It's a two and a half to three hour class tops. So really, people can't be ingesting drink after drink after drink. I mean, it's only a two and a half to three hour period. If that was the case with somebody, I would, I would speak to them on a, on a personal basis, and if they would like to continue coming for, you know, art lessons or art classes, I would allow that. But if, if they can't maintain composure to where they're not disrupting a class, then that would be an issue, and I would, I would have to either, you know, tell them they can attend without consuming alcohol or not attend. And I mean, I would hate to think that I would have to put somebody in that spot, but they would really have to be drinking a lot, you know, two to three hours to, to get to that point.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted, I just wanted to hear how you would handle it and how people, you know, on the line would hear how you'd handle it. And of course, what I'm thinking is, the person would probably show up already had had a lot to drink.
Exactly.
Because obviously, obviously you have control over how much they have, and you can see how much they've had.
Right.
All right, thank you.
In which case also, Sylvia, I, I have the, you know, we would maintain the right to, to deny serving them if we feel that they have shown up already, you know, inebriated.
Okay. Other than that, other than that, you know, of course, I remember Barbara Celestino, the pharmacist, when I was little, and even as a teenager, she was still the pharmacist for Our Hope Valley, the Rexel Farmy Pharmacy, when that's where you get that blue and orange, you know? And, and of course, and then after that, of course, Lance Vars opened it up as, as a liquor, a liquor store. However, I love that you kept the name, and I think this is going to be a wonderful addition for our town. Thank you for doing it.
Oh, thank you. We're, we're very happy and we're very excited about it. Very excited about the building we've, we've managed to maintain and keep the original tile floor, the original crown moldings in there. So we're trying to incorporate as much of the original integrity of that building.
I would assume, Sherry, as Mrs. Barbara Capalbo, I would assume, Sherry, as well, you'll be doing painting classes without alcohol.
Oh, we will certainly offer those as well, absolutely.
I was thinking in the rooms of children.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But you know, of course, once we get past this, this COVID thing and we can, we can see a clearer direction as to how businesses will be able to operate that, that have patrons coming in, hopefully, we can, we can stomp this out sooner than later.
Mm-hmm. I think that would be, I think it's a wonderful addition to Hope Valley, but I'm really also hoping that it's an addition for a lot of children and teenagers to be able to use the facility and learn how to paint.
Absolutely.
Without alcohol.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sherry and Norbert, it's Frank. It'll be a nice addition to the Village of Hope Valley to have that, that building be operational again. I wish you the best of luck, and I would, will support this license.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, thank you all very much for your consideration.
So I just want to reach out, I guess if anybody's out there in the meeting that wants to speak for or against this particular license, please raise your hand by hitting star nine. Okay. Joe, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Frank.
Okay, you got the floor.
Sounds like you're pretty far away.
Yeah, Block Island, not too far, 12 miles.
Good evening, this is Joe Marum. I only need a couple of minutes. I was at all of the meetings for this proposal, and I would like to commend Sherry and Norbert for what they are doing during a very difficult time. I believe this is a win-win situation for them in our town. We have two residents of Hopkinton who will be opening a business in our town. This art studio will attract residents from other cities and towns to spend money in Hopkinton. The example would be Wes's Bakery, a restaurant, Hatton Livery across the city and so forth. My daughter started art class when she was four years old. We all remember those, those days that she had. I don't know how many people got to see the building before Sherry and Norbert purchased it. That building really was a mess. If you look at it now from the window boxes outside, Sherry stole some of my thunder about the original crown molding, moldings and tile wall that they've saved inside. Also, look at the improvements in that whole block with Wes's Bakery and what they've done there. Some people may have concerns about a Class C liquor license. I certainly don't. This is not a bar where people go to drink. Again, Sherry, as you pointed out, people just can't walk in. Customers have to register for these classes, for this art studio. Last thing I'd like to say is I wish Sherry and Norbert the best of luck with their art studio, and I'm sure many children and adults will enjoy the experience and remember it for years to come. I support their Class C liquor license. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. President, Scott Hurst, Scott Billhurst.
Yes, Scott.
I just want the public to know that we got positive feedback from the Chief of Police, Building and Zoning, and the, the Old Valley Wyoming Fire Department in regard to this application. So people will know that there were positive feedback from them sources, and I just think for the record, that should be stated. Thank you.
Okay, Scott, thank you. Anyone out, anyone out there that wants to speak for or against this application tonight? Okay, having heard none, let's see.
I move that we grant the approval of the Class C liquor license filed by Norbert Anse Jr. and Sherry, which last name are you using? DeJardine, right?
DeJardine.
DeJardine.
DeJardine. Sixty-three.
Yeah.
Of sixty-three Cedarwood Lane, Hope Valley, for property located at nine-nine-nine Main Street, Hope Valley, identified as lot, Platte twenty-seven, Lot one oh two. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait.
Subject to all town taxes.
Subject to all town and state and town regulations being met and all town taxes current prior to issue.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. And any further comment from the council? Having heard none, state your name, and if you're yes for, for the license, or no if you're against it.
Scott Billhurst, yes.
Sharon Davis.
Sylvia Thompson, yes.
Barbara Capalbo, yes.
Frank Lindolfi, yes. Congratulations, folks. That was unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn at the licensing board and reconvene as a council.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, and all those in favor?
All right.
Hi, thank you. Okay, before we get into the, the hearing on the Chase Hill Solar, I need to make sure that the, the applicant and all of their representatives are unmuted. So I guess please hit star nine. Let's see, uh, three, seven. Okay. Okay, Stephen, Stephen Sirdick, you out there?
Yes, Frank.
Okay. And what about Charles? Charles Kavasic?
Charles Kavasic here.
Kavasic, I'm sorry. Okay, Douglas, Douglas, you out there?
Doug's here.
Okay, Jason Gold?
Hello, yeah, I'm here.
Jason Gold, okay. Then what about Joel Roca?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, let me just read, read the item on the agenda. Hearing Centrica Business Solutions Karen and James Sorenzia regarding Chase Hill Road. Resume and continue the hearing on a request for an amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the Amendment to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, fourteen eighty-four Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Hanover, Maryland, two-one-zero-seven-six, and Karen M. and James W. Sorenzia Jr., two-oh-one Chase Hill Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, oh-two-eight-oh-four. For property located at Chase Hill Road as Platte two, Lot thirty-two, an RFR eighty zone continued from December ninth, twenty nineteen, to January thirteenth, twenty twenty. Meeting canceled and continued to February eighteenth, twenty twenty. Meeting canceled and rescheduled to March sixteenth, twenty twenty. The March sixteenth, twenty twenty meeting was canceled due to the declaration of emergency regarding COVID nineteen. On April sixth, twenty twenty, the resumption continuation of the public hearing was scheduled for June fifteenth, twenty twenty, provided the hearing could be held in person. Due to limitations on capacity and distance requirements in the discussion by Town Council on April sixth, twenty twenty, regarding a possible resumption of the public hearing on June fifteenth, twenty twenty, resuming the public hearing on that date was not feasible, and a new date was scheduled for August third, twenty twenty. The applicants proposed to construct a two-point-seven megawatt DC ground-mounted solar installation on twelve-point-eight-nine acres of property on Assessor's Platte two, Lot thirty-two. The proposal to utilize the property will require approval of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment from low-density residential to commercial, and a zoning map amendment from RFR eighty to commercial. And all the exhibits are posted on the town's website that the residents can view. So all the filing fees and notices, I guess, were posted, right?
The notices were posted again. Additional billing is required.
Okay, all right. So I guess Stephen or Joel, I guess if you want to, or whoever, you know, I know that you, the main thrust of this hearing was to have an interconnection expert that Councilor Capalbo requested. That person, I believe, is here. If you want, just give us a recap of who you have to testify and what they'll be talking about, and then, then we'll get into the, get into the presentation.
Certainly. And, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as I'm sure the council is, we are anxious to move this application forward and get to a vote. To that effect, we are, have a number of applications and a number of exhibits here tonight. Those exhibits are on the town's website, and with the board's permission, I would ask that our, our engineer, Jason Gold, be asked, be allowed to go through those exhibits and go through the changes. We believe that the changes we made and were, have significantly impacted the application and our changes that we've made in light of the comments that we've received from council as well as the public. So, and then additionally, as you said, we have our inter, an interconnection expert, Doug Teletman, with Centrica here to address a number of specifics about the nature of this project, the interconnection and its impact on the town financially, as well as its overall standing within the town. So with that being said, I'd like to turn the hearing over to allow Jason to address those changes. And to that effect, I believe, Jason, that the array is actually two-point-five megawatts. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So Jason, please, if you could address the exhibits that are before the board, and then we'll move forward with Doug.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Hi, this is Jason Gold. I'm a professional engineer at ESS Group. I'll walk you through, there's a number of exhibits. I'll walk you through them and just give you a brief overview of each. And again, they are on the website for anybody that's listening in. So I'll start with Exhibit A. This is, this is the exact present plan that we presented back in November. So this is provided as an exhibit, just as a reminder of what the original design was. This is a three-point-three megawatt DC array. The fenced area was about thirteen-point-one acres. And it was located roughly two-hundred-and-eighty feet to the nearest residence and three-hundred-and-forty-five feet to Chase Hill Road. And again, this is what we presented last time. We went back to the drawing board, made some changes to address some of the comments and concerns that we, we heard during the previous meeting. So that brings us to Exhibit B. And Exhibit B is titled Reduced Concept. We made quite a bit of changes to reduce the size of this array and to push it further back into the northwest corner, sorry, the northeast corner. This is a, the array's been reduced from three points, three megawatts down to two-point-five megawatts. It's a twenty-four percent reduction. This reduced the size of the fenced area by four-point-four acres about, down to eight-point-seven acres. That's a thirty-four percent, nearly a third reduction in area. It shifted to the northwest, away from the residences, and that increased the distance to the nearest residence by two-hundred feet. So that increased from two-hundred-and-eighty feet to four-hundred-and-eighty feet, which is a seventy-one percent increase in distance. And we also increased the distance to Chase Hill Road by a two-hundred feet as well. So that increased distance is now five-hundred-and-forty-eight feet. So this exhibit, again, shows how much smaller new array is, how it's pushed back up into the corner, away from the nearest residences of the road, greatly increasing the, the distance and the wooded buffer that's on site.
Hearing some background noise. If you're not speaking, please put your phones on mute. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That brings us to Exhibit C. Exhibit C is titled The Wooded Buffer Plan. And this is the same concept we were just looking at. It's colored and shaded to make it a little more clear what's happening with some additional distances that are a little too crowded to put on the first exhibit. What you're looking at here is the dark green, that's existing woods that will remain. The lighter kind of yellowish-green color next to that is trees that will be, shade trees that would be cut if they're tall, but not grubbed. And then the green inside the fence beneath the array, that's trees that would be cut and grubbed and seeded with grass. What you can see here, we added some, some dimensions in working on the previous one. The property line setbacks are increased quite a bit. We're about two-hundred-and-forty-eight feet or more from the southern property lines. The distances to the residences are approximately four-hundred-and-eighty to eight-hundred-and-eighty-four feet away. And there's a significant wooded buffer that was increased. It was originally about twenty-five feet. Now we're looking at about eighty-six feet to one-hundred-and-twenty-four feet on the southern end to really add that wooded buffer and really reduce that visualization from the previous concept. And that, you know, looking at a plan view of this, I can tell you a little bit, you can see the distances, but it's hard to really picture what it's looking like. So that brings us to Exhibit E. And Exhibit E on the website is actually broken down into individual PDFs. If you click through from the latest agenda, there's just a couple of PDFs, but they're all essentially similar. And what these are, sightlines from the nearby residences. We started a line from, not from the house, but actually from the edge of their lawns, the edge of the woods on that property. the edge of the woods on that property, and drew a sightline across the array. And this shows a cross-section view across the array to show the topography and the width of the, the existing woods to give a, a different perspective and to be able to see how it all fits together in relation to each other. You also see a dashed line called labeled the sightline. That's essentially from eye level, looking straight across, and that shows what can actually be seen based on the topography. So what you see from looking at these, and again, I won't go through each individual one unless someone has a question, but from looking at these, you can see that there's generally over 100 feet of woods between the properties and the array. And in addition to that, the topography drops down. And so that significantly reduces the visibility. When you're looking across, you really can't see the entire array. When you look at the plan view, you're seeing a sight with this entire array on top of it, but when you're actually looking at it from the ground, you don't see the entire thing. Most of these, you're looking, again, through 100 or more feet of woods, even if you could see through those woods, you're essentially looking at maybe the top of an array. It's, it's cut back quite a bit.
Hey, hey, Jason, this is Council President Frank. Hi.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Lisa and Kevin, should we have sworn in, Jason, before he testified?
It's better to do it, but I think he was sworn in at the first session of the public hearing, if I'm not mistaken, but it's, it's just good to remind him he's still under oath of testification.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay, thanks, thanks, Kevin. Sorry, Jason, please continue.
Nope, that was a perfect, perfect timing. I would, just was finished. I'll let you interrupt it with me saying that I'm done and handing it back to Steve or opening up for questions.
Yeah, let's, let's take questions from the council, if you don't mind, for the engineering. Again, I'm hearing a lot of background noise. If you're, if you're not speaking, put your phones on mute, please. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Gold?
Mr. Gold is simply the engineer for this, or is he the interconnection person as well?
No, he's separate. He's the engineer.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for the engineer.
Okay, Mr. Gold, go ahead.
I appreciate, Mr. Gold, the, the way you have moved everything back and condensed it. I think that's a great advantage to all of the butters. I wanted to know, I saw that you moved the roadway back to the transformer, which is another question for a different person, but when you have brought this roadway in, where are you considering the road to get to the back of the array for emergency and fire vehicles? Where is that supposed to be?
Right. Yeah, so the emergency vehicles need access to the gate. There is no road around to the back. That's not a requirement. There's clearance between the fence and the array, but as far as an actual road, the road requirement is only for access to the gate.
All right, so once you're at the gate and an ambulance has to get all the way around, is there enough room between the gate, the fencing, and the array to allow for some kind of vehicle if someone breaks their leg or is injured?
Yes, yeah, so there's, there's room between the fence and the array for emergency vehicles and, and maintenance vehicles.
All right, but not necessarily as large as a fire truck?
Right.
So it would be emergency big enough to handle an ambulance?
It would be an off-road vehicle.
An off-road vehicle?
It's like an emergency ATV-type vehicle.
And why did you need a 24-foot gate?
That's just a typical standard gate on this concept. As the design progresses, we'll, we'll decide if that's 24-foot or 12-foot or what that needs to be.
You know, it's a very, it's a small array for something that, that large.
It's a 20-foot road, so that's, that's why there's a 24-foot gate.
Okay, all right. And then the, can you explain why you couldn't use Route 216 as an access through the, either the utility as an, as an easement or perhaps through the, the utility easement all the way in the back as well as the National Grid?
Yeah, so the team had reached out, yeah, that came up at the, in the November meeting, and the, the team, I think Steve can speak to this, but I believe he reached out to National Grid, and that was not, they were not open to that idea. Steve, you can probably write more.
Well said, Jason. Well said. National Grid was not open to us utilizing their private property for access to this site, unfortunately.
And you also couldn't use the utility easement?
No, that is National Grid, that, those easements are over private property, and they are for the exclusive use of National Grid.
So those weren't available? Okay, and then the other question, I think it'll still be Mr. Gold. How many trucks or service vehicles per year will be going in and out of this array over the course of a year, once it's created?
Yeah, once it's, once it's up and running, it's, you know, one vehicle several times a year.
So basically one?
Regular maintenance, yeah.
One, maybe two vehicles, two or three times a year?
Right.
That would be the only vehicle, vehicular traffic on Chase Hill Road and then over to the array, once it's created?
Exactly.
Okay, because we have had people concerned about the road, but it sounds like it's a concern only during the building part of the construction. And I'm assuming that the, oh, this is probably for interconnection. Never mind, I'll wait till the interconnection person. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Any, any questions, Sharon, for Mr. Gold?
No.
Okay. Scott for Mr. Gold?
No, I just, my, but any question I have wouldn't be for the engineer.
You gotta speak into the mic, Scott. Couldn't hear you.
Any question I have wouldn't be for the engineer.
Okay.
I have no question.
Yep, Sylvia, anything for Mr. Gold?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Gold, I just had a quick question. In our packet, we, we had received some, well, it identifies the property addresses, like for instance, 199A Chase Hill Road, and it's got a, a color, color diagram that, I think it shows the sightline from the, from the butters' property line, I guess, to the array.
Okay, yeah.
I guess, though, I'm just trying to, trying to understand, because I'm not used to seeing, you know, these types of graphs. Is that, is that showing, you know, that, that the actual array is below grade from, from where the butters are? Is that, is that what you're trying to demonstrate in these, in these?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. And some, some are closer to some of butters than others, I guess, when we, we have those vehicles, so, okay. Do you know what the grade, the elevation is, I guess? I don't know if you talked about that. From, from like a typical, like, like for, on a butter, I guess, what the, like, what's the slope? What is the amount of the slope, I guess? Do you have any idea on that?
Yeah, so if we're looking at, the first one is, what's the first one up here? It's 187, I think, and that is, you know, that, just eyeballing it here, it's, you know, maybe 20 feet, 20-foot drop on that one. And then if I jump down to say 199A, yeah, about the same. Each horizontal line is 50 feet on the chart.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, thank you. All right, I don't think the council has anything else for Mr. Gold. I think I was, I was the last person, okay? Thank you, Mr. Gold. Stephen, who's next?
After this, I'd like to introduce Doug Teletman, who is an employee of Centrica. He has, I believe there was a letter that he sent around and was addressed to the town council members. It's included, I believe, in the exhibits on the town website. He's going to speak to the, some of the broader scope impacts of this project, and then some of the technical stuff with the trebasset can weigh in on as the council members have questions in that regard. So, Mr. Teletman, I would, I would open the door to you to address, to readdress some of the points in your letter, and then I believe there's also some long-term plan issues that this project may benefit the town as well.
Excuse me, this is Kevin McAllister. Before we move to this, this and the rest of the witnesses, perhaps the town clerk can swear them all in now, so we don't have to worry about that now.
Sounds good, sounds good.
So normally what I would do, I would be in presence, and I would have everybody raise their hand, and I would ask them to, do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
That, that was Doug saying that, and my hand was raised.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that needs to respond, since that was a group swearing in before I start speaking?
I want to say that most everybody had been sworn in previously. The only one that I was aware of that had not been sworn in because he was not in attendance was Mr. Teletman.
The other one I have a question is the interconnection. The person who's going to be talking about that?
Yes, so Charles will be addressing the, the questions regarding interconnection after I've made my comments and answered any questions that anyone might have for me.
And Charles has been sworn in? He's new.
He did not indicate, that he acknowledged the, the oath.
Charles, are you out there?
You may have muted yourself, Charles.
Well, we can swear him in, we suspect.
Later, yeah.
Okay. All right, Doug, Doug, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you, and thank you to the town council for taking your time to hear us this evening. We very much appreciate it. What I want to talk about tonight a little bit is, relates to what I put in our, our letter to you that we sent out on Friday. And that's just to, you know, give a little reminder of some, some background about the project. You know, we're fully cognizant of and sensitive to, as I believe it was Mr. Billhurst stated earlier, that no solar is a very hot topic in town. There's quite a bit of controversy surrounding it. And, you know, I just want to clarify, you know, why we think that this project should not be thought of and lumped in with some of these other projects that have been the root of quite a bit of this controversy. So as Jason pointed out during his comments, this project has been reduced in size in direct response to concerns expressed by both the council, as well as neighbors and other residents. From, you know, almost 13 acres, the array size itself is approximately 6.8 acres, and if we count the fenced-in area, it's 8.6 acres. This on approximately a 21-acre parcel of property. In addition, in response to concerns expressed by both the council and the butters, we've, as Jason also recapped, moved the array into a low-lying area to mitigate to the extent possible any visibility issues as it relates to neighbors, you know, seeing the array. We think based upon the fact that where the array is now in these areas of, you know, 20 feet lower, I think at one point at the rear end of the array, 40 feet lower than grade at the Sorenzia home, that a lot of those concerns have been effectively mitigated. I want to remind the council, and if this has previously been covered, I apologize for redundancies, but this array poses zero danger to the surrounding areas in terms of things like toxic chemicals or chemical runoff or electromagnetic frequency or anything of that nature. And there's also been some opinions expressed that, you know, that, that solar companies come in and, you know, they, they say that they're going to act in a certain manner, and then after being approved, having projects approved, act in a different manner as it relates to the cutting of trees or the placement of facilities. And I just want to point out that Centrica has built four projects in town, two projects for Ray and Lydia, and two projects for Stano Trombino. And on every one of those projects, we've acted in exact compliance with all of the plans that we had submitted to the town. The final thing I'd like to comment on, you know, as I feel it differentiates this project from others that have created concern, is that this project arose as a result of Centrica being approached by the Sorenzias, not the other way around. We did not in any way solicit them by mail, by phone, by in-person. They approached us. At the time that they approached us, they had expressed, you know, their current state of disappointment with the substation going in next door, and told us that, you know, they felt that the only thing that they could do with their property would be to use it for solar. And, you know, they, you know, Jim shared with us, you know, some personal things he was going through, which, you know, the council is likely aware of, and told us that having the ability to use his property for solar was extremely important to him and his family as it related to their, you know, continued quality of life over the course of the next 20 years. As a result, we did make an offer to other Sorenzias that we would lease their property. We are not buying the property. And, you know, although I don't feel that it would be appropriate for me to disclose the precise financial terms that we agreed to with the Sorenzias, I can tell you that the Sorenzias will be substantial financial beneficiaries from this system over the course of the next 20 years. I can tell you that the financial benefits of the Sorenzias from leasing their property will be significantly greater than the financial benefit to Centrica for building this facility. So any perception that somehow Centrica is taking advantage of a Hopkinton resident and profiteering from the installation of the system, you know, I would like to dispel that just by, you know, commenting that the Sorenzias are long-term financial beneficiaries of the system. Along that line, I'd also like to point out that Centrica is very happy to offer the power that this system generates to the town of Hopkinton. And should the town of Hopkinton choose to use... And should the town of Hopkinton choose to use the power that comes off of this system, which will amount to a little bit more than 3 million kilowatt-hours per year, the town would stand to benefit. In addition to the $225,000 in tangible personal property tax that we do from the facility itself, the town can benefit over the next 20 years to the tune of about $4.5 million. And if the town wanted to use the power for longer, the financial benefit over 25 years would approach $6 million. So, you know, there have been meetings in the past where folks have commented that the town doesn't benefit from these types of projects and the residents don't benefit from these types of projects. I just want to point out that both the Terenzias and the town could potentially, well, the Terenzias certainly, and the town if they chose to, could be substantial financial beneficiaries from this system. And the last thing, and thank you for your patience, and as I ramble here, but the last thing I want to mention is, you know, I think it's very important as we, you know, contemplate, you know, our application, you know, this is a, you know, I don't believe that this is really a commercial situation as it relates to your contemplating this approval. I think this is very personal. And it's very personal to the extent that, you know, if you choose to approve this system or the, you know, or the application, the impact is going to be life-changing for the Terenzia family. And if you choose to not approve the application, it will also be life-changing for the Terenzia family, but in a negative way. So, you know, this is, you know, the, as I said, the benefits of the Terenzias from this project will be significantly greater, you know, perhaps more than 100% greater than the financial impact to Centrica for building it. So as you're contemplating this, in the context of, you know, what does this mean to our Hopkinton residents, you know, I just want to point out that I think that you understand that it's extremely important to the Terenzia family to be able to move forward with this project. And with that, I'll pass it to the council if you have any questions for me. And if not, back to Stephen.
Thanks, Doug. Yeah, I'll open it up to the council. Council, any questions for Doug regarding his comments tonight?
Yes, Council Vice President Scott Miller. I just have a question, and I've known generations of the... You hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I've known generations of the Terenzia family.
Get close to the mic, Scott. Get close to the mic. Talk to the mic.
I've known generations of the Terenzia family and a fine family. Obviously, I'm really interested in what the public states, but I had previously asked because we have in-town a lot of smaller solar projects of a couple of three acres on farms and things of that nature, and I had put that out as a possibility. And now this proposal is bigger than that size, and they certainly have a right to make a proposal to the council. My question, if I have a question, is why wasn't a smaller size than this proposed? Why wasn't that put forward? Was it strictly based on financial reasons or what was the thinking behind that? Because I do recall when I had mentioned previously about having one of the smaller solar arrays that we have on some of our farms in town.
Yes, thank you for that question, Councilor Billhurst. So I think the best answer to that question is, you know, those smaller arrays, which typically are 250 kilowatts, you know, roughly 10% of the capacity of the proposed project, you know, the economics of those types of projects, you know, would not equal to the economics for the Terenzia family for this particular project. So I would say that if the project is roughly 10% of the size, it's a fair rule of thumb to expect that the economic benefit to the property owner would be approximately 10%. So in this case, you know, the Terenzias were seeking a particular level of income, and that level of income would not be supported by a 250-kilowatt system. And although, you know, we are sensitive to your specific concerns of the size of the project, and, you know, as a result, you know, we did reduce the project size from almost 13 acres to 6.8 acres, which, you know, resulted in a significant, you know, reduction. And, you know, we took that action in good faith, specifically in response to concerns that you and others had expressed about the system size.
Frank, I have a question.
Yeah, Barbara.
Doug, one of the things that you mentioned in your talk was the tax benefit to the town of $225,000. Did you discuss that with our tax assessor or where did you get the number?
So, thanks for the question, Barbara. The calculation of tangible personal property tax for solar in the state of Rhode Island is based upon the formula of $5,000 per megawatt AC per year. This system is 2.25 megawatts AC, and at $5,000 per year, times 2.25 would equal $11,250 per year. And over 25 years, I'm sorry, that would equal $225,000.
So yearly, it's $11,250.
Correct, $11,250.
Plus property tax.
Yes, this is only the tangible personal property tax.
Right, because then there's property tax as well as tangible. So this is just tangible, correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Barbara. Sylvia, any questions for Doug?
Yeah, I would like you to know that I agree that you have done good work in other solar projects in town, and by you, I mean Centrica Business Solutions have done very good projects. Any negatives that are out there, they're negatives. But we know from your product, in your finished product, that you do exactly what you're supposed to do. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate how this proposal that you have along with the Terenzia family have tried your very best to listen to the comments that have previously been made by the council or the public especially, and that you've done your very best and shown that from the view of the homes, they're at a different level. They're at a level where the project goes, in other words, it's going to be screened naturally by trees. So, and I appreciate how you have done that by moving your panels, de-leading panels. You made it smaller. And I also appreciate that and understand that the Terenzia family finds themselves in a bit of a jam. And this was, and I remember when they spoke years ago, when we had a hearing about, or a meeting, I don't remember if it was a hearing, but a meeting about the national grid and the substation that was going there. And I remember their comments back then, and they were very concerned. They didn't want that to go in. They were opposed to it. And they also asked, "Is there a possibility we could do solar in the future?" And we said, "We didn't know." So, and I know that they have, everyone involved has been very thoughtful, very courteous, tried to do their best, and I appreciate that. But I need you to know, and I need the family to know, which I had previously said to them or communicated with them, that at the last hearing that I attended, I had a negative view then, and I still unfortunately do have a negative view of the project even as it stands now. It's a very difficult area for solar because in a sense it's landlocked, and the only way, the only access road is onto Chase Hill. And we all know how dangerous that road can be, especially with all this truck traffic that will have to enter and exit the property in the construction of this proposal. So unfortunately, I still have a negative view, and I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Sylvia, thank you very much for your comment. I would, I appreciate it. I do want to point out that the only traffic that you can expect from this project will take place during construction. And I would point out as an example, you know, our, you know, recent projects that we have completed for Hopkinton Industrial Park is also located in an area with limited access and egress. And I'm not aware of any issues or complaints or problems that arose during the construction of those two projects. So we do everything in our power logistically to make sure that no construction that we take part in negatively impacts the neighbors in any way. And, you know, so far, I think that we've proven to be able to accomplish that. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Sylvia. Thanks, Doug. Sharon, any questions for Doug?
No.
Okay. Doug, thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Steve, I guess is Charles next?
Charles is. He was having a little trouble with his voice recording, so I'd just like to check in and make sure that he is there and that he's been recognized by the technical side of things.
Charles, are you there?
Mr. Chair, his number ends in 5726. Has he been unmuted?
5726. Charles, are you there?
Now I am. How you guys?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought I unmuted all of Steve's guests, so, sorry, apologies.
No worries. It's perfectly fine. Do I need to be sworn in?
Yes, please.
Ms. Kovacevic, will you raise your hand, please? And do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Charles, as you've been sworn in here and you've heard, if we can just address Ms. Thompson's concerns here initially regarding trucks and access to and from the site, if you could confirm that the site is similar, as Doug said, and similar sizing to some of the other projects in town, and if it would be possible to limit the times and the location at which construction vehicles would enter and exit the premises? And if we could do that from the very short end of Chase Hill Road?
Let me just jump in. So we just finished a project, a project about the same size. It took about two months of the major construction, and I think I tallied up about 20 trucks worth of deliveries during that time. Like I said, the two-month period, all the deliveries were done during normal business hours. And we would make sure that that would stay the same for this project. And then once the project is complete, like stated before, the maintenance is one or two small vans a year for the life expectancy of the system.
And would you be comfortable saying that all of the vehicles would be able to access from the, I believe it would be the 216 and Chase Hill Road intersection versus traveling the length of Chase Hill Road?
Yes, they would come down 216 and take the right on the Chase Hill.
Okay, which would limit the distance and time they had to travel on Chase Hill Road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then if there was anything else that you think is important for the board to know about the technical side of the side of the array, and then I'm sure Mr. Pablo has some questions for you at the very least.
Yeah, no, I'm ready for the interconnection questions if she's ready.
Barbara, you waited a long time for this witness. You want to go ahead and ask your questions?
Yeah, thank you. Now that you've moved the, this is Barbara Kapalvo, now that you've moved the road back and you have the transformer pad at the beginning, at the center of the array, now is that transformer pad going to also hold inverters? Or are you doing inline inverters? Or are you doing padded inverters where they're condensed? How are you laying out the power?
Gotcha. So the transformer pad will hold the transformer and the main switchgear, if you will, the main piece of equipment that adds the circuit breakers. The inverters will be set out throughout the entire array, possibly in clusters every six or seven rows. And that's still to be determined, but the simple question is yes, the inverter will be in the field.
Right, so they're going to be centralized on pads?
No, no, they'll be on racks. They'll be on racks behind the modules.
On racks behind the modules, but they'll be centralized? They aren't going to be in line, so there's one per? Correct. They'll be...
I'm not quite...
They're centralized.
If I can chime in here, Barbara, I think I understand your question. So there won't be pads for the inverters? The structures, the racks that the modules go on, on the backside of those structures, on the posts, the inverters will be installed on those posts?
And those posts will have clusters of inverters, not one per?
Yeah, correct. Very likely somewhere, you know, near the center. If, you know, if you look at the facility over on Gray Lane, it will be similar to that, where somewhere in the center of a row will be the inverters for that row installed on the back of the posts from the, on the solar module racking.
Thank you. That's actually very important because if you go to Gray Lane and take a look, there is almost no noise at all. And because they're away from property line, away from fences, they're not close by. So they, because they're more centralized within the racks, they help alleviate any noise or hum. So I appreciate that. That's a good thing. And then the telephone poles that are going to be coming in to feed the array, are you going to take them, are they going to have to come off Chase Hill Road? Obviously, I'm hoping on the short side, not the long side. Or can you take them from National Grid directly? Poles that can tie directly in right by National Grid rather than on the roads?
No, unfortunately, we need to tie in on Chase Hill Road as that is how National Grid designed it. We can't tie directly into the substation.
Okay. And so you'll be going from the short side of Chase Hill Road, though?
We'll be connecting right outside of... Well, we'll be connecting right outside of the access roads, right next to Chase Hill.
So the, oh, you're going to be, the first major pole will be right on Chase Hill Road? I'm trying, we've got houses on either side of the, um, access point. So if there is any way to do the poles further inland, um, away from the road, as far as you can, that would be beneficial. Um, they are correct that that's a bus route for a lot of the children too, and the road is narrow there. So if the poles can start inland as far as possible, that would be, um, a great benefit.
So the first three poles will be owned by National Grid?
Correct.
And I will work with them to make, to, yeah, to make sure that we put them inside the property as far as, as far as leaving allowed by them.
Yeah, if you, if you could, because they obviously have road, poles on the road, but when you start really adding, going into your own system, I'd like you to be as far in as you can possibly start, because those poles are, are massive. And the transformer, how big is the transformer?
It's going to be a 2,500 kVA, so I have a similar, we have a similar one on Gray Lane, about six feet wide by six feet deep by, let's call it, six feet tall, approximately.
Okay, and when you would install this, or when you would have this designed, I know the planning board has, um, gone over the pad arrangement to make sure that it is not, um, what Gray Lane has right now is a flat pad. Um, I don't know, I believe they were talking about having pads that have, um, uh, rounded or raised edges so that it can withhold any kind of a spill. I realize the transformer holds spills too, but I think the planning board is very anxious to make sure the pad itself can do the same work.
Yes, we, uh, the transformer itself will come up, come with a special oil, that's 99, 97% vegetable oil. And then the rest, we will make sure that we have a containment, um, concrete pad that, God forbid, there is a spill, it would still end up only in the concrete pad, and it will not leak into the ground.
Okay. And then my last question is, um, where, where is the road? The road right now looks like it goes directly into Terenzias' property, or is that road going between the two house properties?
Uh, the way it's designed today is we're going to be using the Terenzia driveway to access the back parcel.
Okay, so then, um, that answers my question, but then my other question would be for Kevin. Can I ask that now, Frank?
Yes, glad Barbara.
So Kevin, so my question, since the road is going into the Terenzias' property, is effectively we have a split zone? How do we, how do we handle that, and are we allowed to do that? Because we have a residential property and then a commercial property.
Right. It would have to be a subdivision, uh, designed and approved by, uh, the planning board, that would, if the council were inclined to approve these applications, that would have to be a condition of the approval, that the subdivision was accomplished, uh, successfully through the, the ordinary planning board process.
So that would have to go through the planning board? That's not something, we can, we can suggest it?
You can suggest it, but you can't approve or design or, that's a, that's a, that's a planning board deal.
That's fine. That's what I wanted to clarify, so that we can look at that, we can suggest that, but, um, that's not something we approve.
So you can make it a condition, planning board approval for the subdivision. So, so that if the planning board, if you did that, if you approved the project subject to that condition, it could be a strong condition, so that if the planning board did not approve the subdivision, that would essentially kill the project.
Okay, thank you. That's one thing I wanted to know. And then the other thing is, there seems to be a space between the residential property that is Terenzias' and the abutting property that could have a road on it that feeds to Chase Hill. Am I correct about that? Um, either?
Yes, Mr. Pablo, you're correct about that. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, so the, we can't have a road through that area because of the, because it would be a wetland crossing.
So, so what, um, Terenzias would have to do is reduce their property, because right now it's at 2.1 acres, which just puts it into R of R80, but if they reduced it to an R1 property, which is less than two acres, two acres or less, then you would have an area for a road. That does not go through their residential property.
That's a possible way to do it, yes, Mr. Pablo. I believe an easement, uh, would be another possible way to do it, um, subject to your solicitor's thoughts. Um, but the goal here, one of the goals of this application, as everyone has stated, is that Chase Hill is already a congested road and a windy road, so we were looking to reduce, uh, the number, not increase the number of curb shots and, um, entry and exit points from, onto the road.
I understand, but my concern is that the Terenzias' property needs to be able to be sold as its own unit. You are not going to sell the house and sell the lease at the same time. Um, I don't want to put us in that situation. It's a difficult one, it's a difficult one, and needs to be avoided. And I think the best way to avoid that is to reduce the Terenzia property, give yourself enough room for a road to go directly in from Chase Hill Road back to the array. I think that what you're proposing is almost, even if the council, um, allowed it, I doubt seriously the planning board would. So I, I think you really need to address that earlier rather than later.
Thank you.
Thanks Barbara.
Yeah, um, this is Doug again.
Okay Doug.
I'm sorry, just to, just to clarify, um, one thing and, and put it in context related to, um, Counselor Sylvia's question about traffic. Um, you know, Chaz mentioned that, you know, with the, the Gray Lane project, which is larger than, um, the proposed Terenzia project, there were approximately 20 trucks that came and went over a period of two months. Um, and, you know, just to, to put that in context, that's an average of one truck every three days. So, you know, it, it's not, uh, something that's, uh, significant or would add to, uh, any traffic issues or congestion issues, uh, in the area. So, thank you.
Um, I, I want to make a comment on that. Um, I am actually interested in the solar. I think you have done a very good job tightening it and making it a perfectly usable solar field near the National Grid. Um, I think that you've done an absolutely amazing job keeping it as far as you have from all the neighbors' houses. And since I have a solar field 500 feet from my home, that no one can see, um, and it's perfectly silent and dark and quiet, um, and non-toxic, I am not against solar arrays in different areas of town. Um, but as far as the Gray Lane, remember Gray Lane had, did not have to remove trees, it was a relatively flat piece of land. Um, this one is going to be far more complex than Gray Lane, uh, which was, uh, pretty much an open cornfield. Um, so I do think you'll be having more than 20 trucks, and I don't want to minimize that. Um, however, I do think you've done a really fine job, and you have kept it as far as possible from people, and you have kept it so that it cannot be seen. Um, and I know personally, because there's one by me, that it's silent and dark. Um, and it is appreciated.
And Mr. Pablo, if the board were to approve it, we could, if need be, work with the planning board to modify the shape, uh, as we've shrunk our array, um, of that lot, and still likely keep it at two acres while working within the constraints of the wetlands, if that is something that is, um, very important to the council.
I think the wetlands are important, and I do think it's important that that is looked at, so that you, um, the property needs to, um, be smaller than the 2.1 acres, enough that it will give you a free and clear road. Um, I think that is important. I have one more question, um, and it's on map. Um, it says C4, but it's the reduced concept. In the, um, north, south, in the western side, there is a, a more open space where you have cut trees. It's like a little, uh, light green bump out. Is there a reason why that's bumped out, instead of just coming straight across as woodlands?
Yeah, I can answer that question. That's kind of a graphical, uh.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Jason, Jason Gold, that he asks us.
Yeah, thanks Jason.
Um, yeah, so, that area is already, there's no, it's already cleared. There's no trees there.
Oh, okay.
So.
You just didn't put any.
It's just kind of a graphical, it's just kind of a graphical call, and it's not, it's not trees to be cleared, because there are no cleese trees, but we didn't want to show it as a wooded buffer, because there's no trees. So, it would grow back in naturally. I just didn't want to misrepresent that.
Yeah, nature does grow back in as quickly as she can. Um, I, I think, thank you. I think that's enough questions for me.
Okay, thanks Barbara. Um, council, have any questions for the last witness that testified Charles, the interconnection person?
Uh, Frank, I do. This is Sylvia.
Okay, shoot Sylvia, go ahead.
Yeah, um, as far as Gray Lane is, is concerned, uh, when you come along of Route 3 and turn down on Wellstown Road, and then take a right onto Gray's Lane for that project that needed to be built, there aren't any residences. There's no residences. So it is, and then Gray Lane is a dead end, and there are no residences. There's businesses, but no residences. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that. Thank you.
There's actually one, there's one.
Yeah, there, there is one residence there.
That is correct.
Is there one on Gray Lane, way down the end or something?
Yeah.
No, it's right in the middle.
Right in the middle.
Oh, I thought that was, uh, I thought that was Mr. Gilman's business.
Uh, no, right next to it Sylvia. Yeah, I.
Oh, now I remember. Yeah, now I remember. Thank you, thank you for that. So there is one residence. Thank you.
Yeah, I had to take wheels on wheels there. That's how I know. There's a nice lady that used to live there. I'm not sure if she still does.
And, um, and Counselor Sylvia, my, my point about Gray Lane was not to, um, draw a, uh, parallel from a, uh, residential standpoint, but just to let you know about the amount of traffic that one can expect during the construction of the system. Um, that, that was my point there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Scott, do you have any questions for Charles, the interconnection person?
No, I do not. I, uh, I know it's an issue that Counselor Kapalvo has been long interested in, and she finally got a, a chance to ask the questions that, uh, so she must be, uh, golden tonight. She finally, uh, got her, uh, questions on this topic.
Okay, thanks Scott. Sharon, anything for Charles?
No.
Okay.
I, I would just like to point out, Ms. Chairman, um, that at the prior meetings, and I believe it actually may have even been Counselor Davis, um, at a number of meetings, suggested that, uh, buffers should be, um, in the nature of 200 feet or so on individuals' own land, um, in this type of situation. And I wanted to point out that we made concerted efforts to address that comment on hers, of hers, and to make sure to pull our array back to such a size so that we could have significant buffers both on the property within which the array is located, as well as, uh, buffers on adjacent properties.
Okay. Right, any, um, any further comments by the council? Okay, having heard none, then I guess we'll, um, we'll open it up to the, uh, public. Um, let me just, uh, hold on one second. Okay, I want to open it up to the, uh, again, please, if you're not speaking, please put your phones on mute, please. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to a Butters first. Uh, I know Chip isn't a Butter. I'm not sure if the other folks are, so this will be for a Butters first, and then all others after that. Chip, do you hear me?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, just, just state your name and your address, so we can get that on the record and.
Uh, so this is Clifford Hale. I'm also here with Emily Funtzonia, and we both live at 211 Chase Hill Road. Um, so the first thing that I'd like to say is that I, I think, I'm still actually pretty stunned that we're having meetings or hearings about this, uh, over a year and a half after the planning board provided a negative opinion about this project, you know, that was back in 2019, citing several reasons that this project is not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. So the fact that we're still talking about this, um, and that we're applauding the developers for making changes is all moot, in my opinion, because this should not, we shouldn't even be talking about this. Um, it doesn't, doesn't matter how many times the applicant reduces the footprint of the panels or rearranges them on the parcel. This idea, changing a single residential parcel in a rural residential neighborhood to a commercial parcel, is not consistent with that comprehensive plan. And like the others' own changes granted by this council in the same way, it's an insult to anyone in town who purchased residential property in a fully residential neighborhood, including us and all the other Butters. What sort of, for anyone in the future, considering buying residential property in this town, what sort of guarantee are they going to get so that there's not going to be, at some point in the future, commercial property right next to them? And I know that we continuously say, oh, we need to be cognizant of landowner rights, but how would the Terenzias like it if I decided to put a gas station on my property next year? I am sure that they would not be singing the praises of landowner rights, and they would not be encouraging me to go ahead and make money to benefit myself only and none of the other residents. The fact that the council has put itself in the position to choose which families in Hopkinton are worthy of special treatment, and which families will not benefit or even be harmed by that special treatment, is an absolute breach of community trust, and it's really very frustrating and aggravating. At the first meeting for this hearing, uh, the Hope Alley Elementary Gym was full of individuals wishing to voice their opposition to the project, and the fact that this has been continued so many times, and the plans have changed every time, I think, since that initial hearing, makes each previous hearing almost useless, and we're constantly having to fight a new battle with each hearing. And it's really frustrating that this is being allowed by the town council. At the December continuation of the hearing on this project, we delivered to you a letter signed by 11 of Butters expressing our opposition to this project. We fear that, for the record, there is very clear opposition to this project by all of the Butters and several of other members of this neighborhood, because I know in the past that the town council has, uh, validated their decision by saying, well, nobody complained about it. So I just want to be very clear, there are a lot of people complaining about this particular project. I also want to, uh, remind you that according to the Rhode Island General Law, 45, tax 24, dash 53, you may not introduce conditions or alterations to the zoning ordinance amendment once this hearing is closed. So I'm asking you that at the close of this hearing, you read the exact wording of the zoning ordinance amendments that's resulting from this hearing, and that you will eventually be voting on. And finally, in the, you know, hoping to move things along here, we encourage the council to close this hearing tonight and schedule. to close this hearing tonight and schedule a date for a decision on the proposed amendment as soon as possible. One last note, it's, you know, the developers think it's a wonderful idea to bring all trucks in from the short side of Chase Hill Road, but I'd like to remind them that there's actually a wooden bridge down at the bottom of this hill. Now you can access the road from a very sharp, greater than 90-degree turn if you're coming from 216, 91 to 216, but that's going to be a very difficult turn for any big trucks. And so otherwise, they're probably going to try to go over that wooden bridge. And driving over that wooden bridge in our own personal cars, the wood rattles like crazy. So, okay, it's going to be 20 trucks, allegedly 20 trucks over a two-month period, but that's 20 more trucks that are going to pass across that bridge and would happen if this project wasn't even being considered. And with that, you know, thank you to the town for hearing.
Thanks. Thanks, Chip. Next. Joe, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you. Hi, this is Joe, this is Joe Moreau from Old People Road. The first time I heard Mr. Shurenzi speaking was about his residential property plan being ruined by the substation. I echoed his comments about buying residential property and expecting it to remain residential at a council meeting. At one of the meetings, Counselor Capalvo asked Mr. Shurenzi if he knew that National Grid had rights to build a substation before he purchased this property. And he answered yes. If that was me and I knew that National Grid had rights, I would not have purchased the property. At one of the first meetings with Mr. Shurenzi and his attorneys and experts, Mr. Shurenzi said he was not happy with the presentation. Myself and many others have been upset with the lack of follow-through concerning this project. You know, the binders, the email information requests, it never happened. The electric lens expert that we finally got to hear. At every solar project, I have seen attorneys and developers make all kinds of promises with the project. With this one, it was said when the length of the lease expires, it will be open space for the town. This plan for this project is a split zone, a property for a residential home and an industrial manufacturing plant. You talk about opening up a can of worms with residents in any other part of town that want to split zone their property. Look at the people at Palm Circle where RF R80 was changed and it was never changed back to zoning. Now they're faced with three industrial plants there. As Mr. Shurenzi said, he bought residential property and expected it to remain residential. I clearly heard him say that at a council meeting. In fact, his original plan was for house lots for his children, which I thought would be a great idea. Just like Mr. Shurenzi's neighbors, they bought residential property and expect it to remain residential. I would not want any of my neighbors to split zone their property to install the industrial manufacturing. This is not the right location for this industrial manufacturing plant. The site changed from, as they said, the acres changed, but it's still residential property. Counselor Capalvo and others have concerns about the design of the project, with the transformers and the place and the connectors and the telephone poles and all the other things. You know, I heard the comment about off-road vehicles to get in, no fire, truck access, that you can get into the property, which is one way in and one way out. I want to mention a couple of things about comments that Doug mentioned that I added, where he stated, this is not a commercial situation but a personal situation. I feel bad for the Shurenzias, but how about all the other Hopkinton residents that have a personal situation? I want to read something real quick from plannersweb.com. It talks about spot zoning, the process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification, totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owner of such property and to the detriment of many others. I wasn't reassured by the answer that Barbara had posed about the telephone poles. I heard something about National Grid and I heard a very quiet okay. Hopkinton Industrial Park is a great example. I complimented them at several meetings on what they were doing. I was in favor for them to increase solar in that park because it's an industrial park. I was told that some of that electricity generated is also supplied to the vendors there. The comment about not going to add to the traffic issues in the town in, in that area, that is absurd. As Chip pointed out with that bridge that's there, that is going to be a nightmare. The last thing I want to say is, this is difficult. My friend Ted, Ted Dione is no longer with us, but his family and friends continue his fight to stop this project. Please, as Chip pointed out, close the hearing, have the vote, and please vote no. This is not in the best interest of the Hopkinton residents, especially the Butters and in that particular neighborhood. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, next. Phone number 1373. You have the floor.
Hi, this is Daniel McCowsky. I am actually the nephew of the late Ted Dione, the gentleman that Joe Moreau just mentioned. I know that there's been a lot of talk going on and I want to put all of my personal feelings aside of my uncle's property and what he was fighting for. And I also would like to put aside the opinions of the abutting neighbors and I'd like to speak solely on facts. In Rhode Island, a natural heritage areas are designated by the Rhode Island DEN and represent locations where state listed endangered, threatened, or special concern species occur. This entire solar project is located entirely within a mapped natural heritage area. Within this mapped natural heritage area, there are four endangered species that are found, two being plants and two being insects. They are the long tubercle spiked ridge, which is a plant, the fox tail club moss, which is another plant that grows in wetlands, the arrowhead spiked tail dragonfly, and then as well, most importantly, the American burying beetle, which you might not know is Rhode Island state insect. The wetland delineation report conducted in July represented that these three species would not be affected since it is outside of the jurisdictional, jurisdictional wetlands. I don't understand how that could be stated when the whole property is in a national heritage protected area and all of these species have the ability to either grow or procreate within this area. The wetland is also connected to the unnamed stream south of Ashway Road, which means any polluted runoff could run right into that stream, damaging the stream's species as long, as well as any plants that are along the stream as well. And then in the center of the property, there is a drainage channel that flows easterly across the solar project and empties into the swamp. From collected info on the land, I think we could all agree it is a very wet site that could pose a lot of problem for these large photovoltaic and logging trucks because as it was mentioned, this isn't like other projects. There are going to be many trees that need to be taken down, mostly being maple trees, which they stated grow, have a height upwards of 80 to 100 feet in their report. These vehicles are sure to get stuck, especially the logging vehicles. The only way that this would be able to be avoided would be to completely change the footprint of this property, thus eliminating the wetlands and impacting a national heritage area. Due to the fact that this entire site is protected by the National Heritage Act, it is home to four endangered species. Drainage and polluted runoff will flow directly through the site and into the unnamed stream on Ashway Road and the ground footprint will need to be altered in order to accommodate larger vehicles. I do not feel that this site is lawfully or logistically able to accommodate a solar field. In addition, there has been mention of child safety in school buses. I called Ocean State Transit and I asked for them to provide me with the bus schedules for last year's, last year's bus. I recorded that Cherahoe alone will be having vehicles from 6:15 to 7:00 a.m. and that will consist of 15 stops. That will be on Ashway Road in Chase Hill. Then, for the elementary school, it will be from 7:50 to 8:10 on 10 stops, which is again on Chase Hill and Ashway Road. Then, when the kids, the children are returning, Cherahoe has buses on those roads from 2:30 to 3:00 p.m., increasing to 17 stops. And then at the elementary from 3:50 to 4:30, which is 10 stops. That is a total of 52 stops in, on one day. That is 26 lives at stake and these are children's lives at stake. Ocean State buses are nine feet wide by 40 feet long. Standard logging and photovoltaic trucks are nine feet wide. This does not leave much room in a very narrow Chase Hill Road to have two large vehicles passing one another, let alone having one of these vehicles be filled with our precious children of our town. I also pulled police reports from 2015 to 2020. There were 78 moving citations on Chase Hill alone and five accidents. Two of these accidents occurred within the site, one being at 187 Chase Hill and 227 Chase Hill. To me, this would prove that this is an unsafe site to be having large vehicles coming in and out, whether it is for a short period of time or for the constant maintenance of the project. They can only enter the site by Ashway Road from Oak Street. As Chip mentioned, it is a very sharp turn. Him and I actually went out and measured the road and with a 90-degree turn, I did research and according to the California Trans Design Manual, if you are making a 90-degree turn, you need a minimum of 27 feet width of a road. The road outside of the Shurenzias property is a generous 21 feet. Even if it were, they were to cut this degree of an angle down to say 60 degrees, you still need 24 and a half feet of clearance in order to make one solid turn. So what these trucks would mean, need to be doing would be making multiple point turns in order to access Chase Hill Road, to access, to get off of Chase Hill Road, to leave the Shurenzias property, and then also enter the Shurenzia property. This is very dangerous because if you've driven down Chase Hill Road, right on the corner of the Shurenzias property is a, is a blind corner where you are not able to see around the corner. So that is a recipe for a disaster. In addition, you are coming down the hill and that hill on Chase Hill has an elevation from 125 feet that drops down to 52 feet. So these trucks are going to be going down a large hill, having to stop and then make a multiple point turn if they are not using the wooden bridge, which Joe and Chip mentioned would be easier for them to use. In addition, in addition, this leaves the trucks making multiple point turns, as I said, and it is very different, very difficult. Also, I spoke with National Grid and this year, they are planning on removing all of the oak trees that are marked on Chase Hill that have been hit by the unfortunate moss that we, we were hit by a year or so ago. On my uncle's property alone, just on the road, there are six to seven 80 to 100-foot oak trees that need to be taken down. National Grid is going to be going up and down these roads, cutting these trees down, and that is also going to add to the amount of traffic, the amount of large vehicles, and not only is it going to be National Grid vehicles, but is also going to be additional logging, large vehicles that need to dispose of these trees. Overall, to me, this puts our children, our police, who sit right at the bottom of Chase Hill where these trucks will be turning, shooting radar at danger. Now, these developers did mention it is only for a short period of time that they might be having these trucks going in and out, but I ask you, Town Council, even if it is for a short period of time, do you think that that matters? Because to me, a loss of life lasts forever. Our children, our officers, our workers, and our residents' safety should trump all and Chase Hill is too unsafe to ensure the safety from these large trucks. Finally, I've addressed, I need to address some monetary issues. I've, I've mentioned that the most important reasons not to construct this farm are the safety of the reservation, of the residents, and the conservation of the protected animals and lands, but I would like to speak on my final concern, which is the monetary issue. In 2017, the town proposed a Chase Hill pavement project. This project was to resurface Chase Hill due to its poor road conditions and many potholes. The project would never, was never approved and the road continues to get worse and more dangerous by the day. The impact that these large vehicles have on roads is astronomical. It is well-known that larger vehicles, which will almost solely be used for this project, cause substantial damage to road infrastructure than standard vehicles that completely occupy Chase Hill Road. I was able to pull information off of the internet and I can also provide this to the town council as well as the development team. A long haul semi-trailer, which consists of three axles, is, is equivalent to 1,408 passenger cars. So they say that they would have a vehicle every 1.3 days. So you figure that vehicle is going in and out of Chase Hill on the short side. I agree, they did say it was the short side. That leaves you at almost adding 3,000 cars' worth of traffic to Chase Hill that would never have been there if this, if this project is to not be approved. So with the added truck, truck traffic to this road, it will expedite the necessity of repaving Chase Hill, something that was already put off in 2017. And it is shown that repeated use of these vehicles caused pavement, pavement that is designed to last 20 years, it wears out in seven years. Another concern I have monetarily with the project is the reforestation project that was presented by the Land Management Service. There's been, there's been a proposed $24,592 for the reforestation of this site, which doesn't include the decommissioning costs, which were not presented to us. Of the $24,592 proposed, there were added costs not accounted for yet mentioned in the report. Some of these were removal of tree tubes after the growth of the trees have established, which is roughly five years, and also the use of tree shelters in order to improve success rates, maintenance, and removal of said tree forts. We are also not told how they obtained the pricing of $1.25 a plant, which is very low. Is, to me, is this an average cost? And what about the labor, the equipment, or overhead? None of this was included whatsoever. Also, it states that when a solar project is done, it will become state land and donated. So if this land is donated and you have residential property sitting on the front and state land in the back, that would mean that a trailhead would need to be made from this land and a, the commercial road will be used for people to access. That means to me, the Shurenzias or whoever at the time is, the residents of that home would need to agree upon letting individuals go down their driveway in order to access this, this state land. My biggest, based on the damage of the vehicles will cause on Chase Hill, leading to sooner, more drastic road repairs, no decommissioning port being provided, and the reforestation report leaving out many additional costs, I do not. reforestation report leaving out many additional costs, I do not believe it makes monetary sense to construct this farm based off the projected tax relief that this project expected to generate. Now, I'll be honest, I am all for renewable energy resources to cut down on taxes and provide clean energy, but at what expense? At our town's beautiful rural nature. We should be looking at an alternative site, such as the old town dump, rooftops of large commercial buildings, or even solar carports located in large parking lots. Based off of the information I provided to the council today on safety, environmental, and monetary issues with this project, I would ask the council to please take all of my comments into consideration, that this farm does not make sense for the town of Hopkinton.
Thank you. Okay, next, um, last four digits, the phone number five seven six one.
Hi, this is Carol DeRozers, Pleasant View Drive.
Yes, Carol, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to, um, note that in the past, we have had over five hours of commentary from experts, from abutters, from residents, and I just don't want it to be lost and forgotten. Um, what everybody has said, simply because the applicant has had so many delays requested, and tonight, they get to have almost like the final say. And I want to reiterate, like Chip said, that this really is supposed to be about comp plan consistency, and that all of the details that have been opined over for over five hours are essentially irrelevant. This really is about consistency with the comp plan. Residents are worn down, they lose sight of these hearings, and I think that's a tactic. You know, it's been said that Centrica has been very good and coro- cooperative, but again, with these delays, it's hard for me to feel the same. And to now have someone suggest that a change to the rezoning, making the Shurenzia property R1, is really ridiculous at this point in time. To me, it would make this whole application void. Um, it's not at all, it's been proposed for over a year, it's not up to the Town Council or members of the Town Council to solve any issues that the applicant may be faced with. And I just hope that we can have faith in our Town Council members, um, including those who are not running for reelection, to actually listen to the residents who have spoken in the past and who have spoken again tonight, um, and to please remember that you represent us first and foremost. That's it, thank you.
Phone number ending in three six nine nine.
Good evening, this is Rajeev McCowsky, trustee for Ted Dione, deceased, and Mariette Dione. I wanted to reiterate what, uh, all of the different residents have commented on, but given the comprehensive nature of the comments made by my son, Daniel McCowsky, and the extensive research that went into his comments, I will, um, defer to another resident of the town.
Uh, let's see, uh, phone number ending in four seven two three, four seven two three.
Hi, this is Nikki Scott, um, one eighty-seven Chase Hill Road, I'm in a butter. Uh, the solar project does not belong in a residential area. The land should, should remain residential and not be zoned commercial. It is irresponsible to allow big trucks on a curvy country road. Dean Warehouse Storage Facility is at the opposite end of Chase Hill. Big trucks sometimes come down Chase Hill when their GPS reroutes them off of Route Three. Instead of going on, onto Route Three, they come down Chase Hill. All of the residents in the area do not want the solar project. The impact will be life-changing for all the residents in a negative way. I ask the council to please listen to, um, the, the residents, and, um, I, I respectfully thank you for letting me give you my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, uh, phone number ending in nine zero three three.
Hi. Can you hear me? Uh, this is Joshua Shurenzia.
Well, hi, Josh. Yep, you have the floor, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, I'm the son of the landowners at the proposed two oh one Chase Hill Road solar installation. I am speaking tonight on, not behalf of myself, but for my parents, Jim and Karen. I know a lot of people are not really seeing their insight on the proposed solar installation. My parents were not hunted down or targeted for the project, not trying to get rich off of it, simply the best option they have for this place at this point in time. A lot of you might not know my parents are the greatest, they've judged them just off the hearsay of others, and by the way this project is making them out to be. They are both the most kind, caring, outgoing, friendly, loving people you ever meet. My father, my mother has worked at Charahoe Regional School District as a lunch lady since I was in elementary school in the late nineties. She also worked as a bus monitor for the school district after she left the school, like a- after she left the school working. Not only was she there to pick up some of your kids every single day, morning, afternoon, in the sun, wind, rain, snow, she's there to make sure they ate properly. Sometimes, if they were hungry and had no money, she would gladly make sure they were taken care of. She also acted as an amazing mother at home. My family always had home-cooked meals and clean clothes. She loved every single crazy animal we ever had over the years, dogs, cats, horses, ponies, pigs, cows, peacocks, chickens, ducks, you name them, we've had them. But, uh, she loved flowers, indoor, outdoor, always had a big garden. She was always working hard, she loved splitting firewood for the downstairs wood stove. Like you guys said before, some of that property out there is already cleared. Um, they have had log trucks here in the past, they made it up and down the road no problem at all. And, uh, yeah, my father ran the diesel repair business for many years, named South Shore Diesel. Long business he serviced and repaired the majority of the local businesses and services, service vehicles and machinery, from local fire departments, the ambulance corps, the tow trucks, construction equipment, so much more. And on the side, he also helped my grandfather, Jim Shurenzia Senior, with their local carriage ride company called Sidle Farm. They've been a part of so many public events, so many special moments, you know, weddings, birthday parties, so many special days, celebrations, festivals, Halloween parties, Christmas parties. And, uh, my father, in the last five years, has, uh, found out he has a benign brain tumor. It's inoperable. I mean, he's, it's not really killing him, but he can't do anything from it. I understand this, nobody's, you know, nobody's fault, nobody's problem. Ain't asking for much. See, my parent, my parents brought this piece of property in the early two thousands with the intentions of raising a family, having the best neighbors anybody's ever heard of, including the Dione's, um, the Scots, the McCowskys, they're all great people. Uh, yeah, they don't want to ruin anyone else's life with this project. They're really not out to get anybody, they're not looking to get rich, and I strongly believe it is in the best interest that this project, out of all projects, is the most ideal one. My parents came up with this plan after National Grid gifted, uh, permission to build an industrial-sized substation out there. And, uh, whatever that guy's name was that said they, they knew about that, that, that's completely false, I don't know, they had no, no knowledge of National Grid owning that property. Actually, uh, yeah, I'm not going to say what I heard, but, uh... But anyways, they were not tracked down, they weren't hunted down by any solar companies or anybody, they're just looking to make out, you know, make, make some money. My father's in hardship, my mother's really in hardship now with the virus and everything's going on at school. Like I said, I understand it's nobody's fault, nobody's, nobody's fault. I just wish everybody wouldn't get so angry, you know, I don't, I've never seen so much hate, and it's kinda sad. You know, Daniel's talking about all these bus traffics and this and that, come on, you kidding me? You know how many log trucks have been on this road? I pave roads for a living, like, if you pave the road right, it'll last a lot longer than twenty years, but I don't know. The way this, the way the taxes get spent maybe should be looked at a little better. But, um, yeah, that's another reason why you should consider this, this, it'll be better for the taxes. I understand it's not a lot, but it's also not going to cost any money, and I can promise you that nobody's going to get killed in a car accident from this place when it happens, unless you deliberately do so. I don't know. That's all I gotta say, I really wish you guys would please, you know, think about it a little bit, reconsider. That's all.
Phone number ending in two nine nine seven.
Hi, this is, um, Eric Bibler on Woodville Road. Um, I think I'd just like to say a few things to put these proceedings into perspective, at least from my point of view. First of all, I don't think this proceeding is about the applicant. Um, and I, I'm not aware of anybody myself who has any personal animus towards the applicant. I am aware of the number of people that have a lot of sympathy and a lot of compassion for the applicant, but this is about, this is about permitted land use, and this is about the town's zoning regime and the comprehensive plan, and what anyone, regardless of who you are, is allowed to do. Um, and that's what this process is about. That's the first thing, I think we gotta set that straight. I don't, I thought it was completely inappropriate for, uh, Councilor Surtit to be making, um, the sort of personal appeal that he made, that really has no bearing on this. Secondly, you can call this a split zone, or whatever you want to call it, but the basic proposal here is from a residential property owner who wants to install ten acres, a, a ten-acre commercial solar power plant behind his house. He wants to maintain the house and have a, an industrial solar installation in his backyard, he wants to use his driveway as the, um, access point to build the road over, it's going to go right past his house, and he needs to bring the poles out to, uh, Chase Hill Road. And in case anyone doesn't really understand what that means, you can take a drive down Route two sixteen, which I do all the time, and you can pass by the installation on Alton Bradford Road. This was the one, uh, that at least one counselor promised, you'll never know it's there, you won't see it from the road. Well, it's pretty hard to miss those poles and all the rest that goes with it, the road and so forth. So, this is literally an industrial application on a commercial property. Then, next, I think that's important to remember, these delays matter, not a reason for your decision tonight, but it's definitely a huge disservice to the Town Council's constituents. I, I almost can't believe this has happened, except that I think I personally have been, I, I've attended, monitored, reviewed somewhere between fifty and a hundred meetings that occurred only over the last two, two and a half years in this town. That, that's a hell of a lot of meetings, but that relate to solar, all of which relate to solar energy. This project received a negative adverse opinion from the Planning Board on March sixth, two thousand nineteen. They voted unanimously five-zero, all the members were present, to reject this. It wasn't a hard call, it wasn't an agonizing decision, they didn't have to think about it very hard, it was just so obviously inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Now, at one of these hearings, you know, uh, an attorney spoke to the Town Council and tried to advise them as follows, and I'll read verbatim, said, "First of all, the only legal question before the council, which is before you tonight and through these hearings, is whether or not the application for the zone change and the application for the change to the future land use map attached to the comprehensive plan would be consistent with the comprehensive plan." A little bit further in this, uh, same testimony, this attorney said, "So this council should focus on whether or not these applications before it are consistent with the comprehensive plan or not. That's the only valid legal question before you." And then, goes on to talk about different ordinances. That attorney was our town solicitor, Kevin McAllister, and on more than one occasion, when it suits him, he has advised the Town Council that the only matter before them in these hearings is whether or not these projects are consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's the truth. It's not whether the transformers are in line, or what kind of shrubs you're going to plant, or anything else. And it's not the revenue either, which in this case is eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per year. There is not one abutter, there is not one resident in the town of Hopkinton who has come out in favor of this plan. Not one, that I reckon. And eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is enough to, uh, pay the annual expense for six-tenths of a student at Charahoe. So I don't think the Town Council is going to be able to get off with the idea that this is part of some master plan to make a significant dent in the budget. I think, I think the most, the most shocking thing that happened tonight from my point of view, I mean, just absolutely shocking, is that when asked the question of what does this mean, this idea of a split zone, what would that entail, what would that require, our own town solicitor responded that this project would require a subdivision designed and approved by the Planning Board. Then he went on to clarify in response to a further question, because I think that, that the Town Council can suggest, but can't approve or design a subdivision. I think the question that's hanging in the air here is, if the Town Council were, by some incredible failure of good judgment, were to approve a zone change for this project, well, then it would go back to the Planning Board, and, and, and the approval, the zone change approval would be conditional upon the approval of the Planning Board. Now, we have a long history of treating the Planning Board as if they're an irrelevant adjunct in town, as if they're advisory-only and so forth, but you can ask him tonight, if you like. I think the town solicitor was pretty clear that in this instance, the Planning Board doesn't have to approve anything. The Planning Board doesn't have to approve a subdivision, the Planning Board doesn't have to approve a design, they don't have to approve this. Now, this is the very same Planning Board that on March nineteenth, two thousand and, uh, March sixth, two thousand and nineteen, voted unanimously that this entire project, no matter how big or small it is, no matter where the roads are, no matter where the transformers are, no matter where the poles go, this entire thing conceptually was a non-starter from the very beginning. I think it's highly unlikely that the Planning Board is going to turn around and start getting into the weeds of what sort of subdivision they're going to approve. They don't have to, there's no reason for them to do so, it would defy all reason and logic and, and the law, because it would spot zoning, it would defy all, all, all logic for them to turn around and do an about-face. How could they possibly approve a subdivision to spot zone on this property, which they've already found to be inconsistent with the, uh, with the plan? So, I think I speak for the abutters who've been, who've been through this miserable experience since January seventh, two thousand nineteen, when these papers were filed. I don't think their anger is directed towards, towards, um, their neighbor, not one bit. I think their anger is directed towards the Town Council, this is not an isolated instance, this is not the first time that this Town Council has dragged residents of this town through multiple, multiple meetings for, for something that's just completely senseless, because it should have been a non-starter to begin with. And I just want to say, on a personal basis, because I certainly do talk- And I just want to say on a personal basis, because I certainly do talk to many Abutters for several of these projects and have done so for over two years, I remember being previously shocked in the hearings which you decided on March 2 of this year for the Atlantic Solar Project on Main Street, I think at the hearing at the end of January, the president of the town council said he'd really like to hear from the Abutters. And I think the same thing was said on Skunk Hill. There were petitions out there protesting the project that were signed by every single Abutter. The town council had copies of those petitions, and many people took the trouble to enter comments on those petitions. And I can tell you, there are literally, no exaggeration, hundreds and hundreds of Abutters and potential Abutters to these projects who have had dozens or hundreds of sleepless nights because of you, because you've made this all possible, because you have framed these proceedings in this fantastically crazy way that we're here tonight talking about a project that was rejected on day one by the planning board and which the town solicitor has suggested really isn't even proper, impossible without planning board approval. So, I'll leave it at that. I certainly hope that there will not be a single vote in favor of a zone change for this project under these circumstances. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not sure if we heard from you already, 9033. I thought we did, but maybe not.
Yes, you did. This is Josh Shurenzia again.
Oh, hi, Josh, hi.
We're talking about all these zoning things and everything. One thing, I've been, I've been biting my tongue for a while, but I hate to be a rat, and like I said, I'm speaking on behalf of myself on this part, but I don't know, everybody's all worried about the environment and stuff, like what about the marina sitting at the bottom of the hill? Like, there's a boat marina sitting there with like maybe 30 boats. I don't have a problem with anybody, or the birdics or anybody, my father's yelling at me right now for talking about this. But you guys want to talk about reality and saving the environment and shit? And I don't know, I happen to notice that Chip's got a frickin', he's got a solar panel in his chicken coop, but he's against ones at my parents' house? Like, what is that? And the Scots, they run a plumbing business out of their house, commercial vehicles are fine like that. I'm sorry, Nikki and Steve, but I don't know, it's just not right. It's only right when it, when it, when everybody says it is? I don't know. It still makes sense. And they talk about, you know, saving the environment and this and that, and stewards of the land. Look at BDA, that's the biggest eyesore this side of Rhode Island. Are you kidding me? I'm sorry, guys, but I don't know. You guys were the best neighbors. That's all I got to say.
Thanks. Okay. Looks like no more hands are up. I guess...
Frank, if I could very briefly recap.
Yes, Steve.
Stephen Surtit.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for taking your time this evening. I want to thank you for soldiering through this application with us, with the nature of the changes that we've all had to endure, and doing this telephonically has been a new experience, I'm sure, for all of us. I would encourage you to look deeply at the application that is currently before you, take into account all of the requests that have been made by the council. Ms. Davis's request that there be nearly 200 feet of on-site buffer, that Mr. Hurst's request that the application, that the array be shrunk to the small, to the smallest reasonable size that will make sense for the array to be constructed. While there are some folks out there that are not happy with any solar in the town of Hopkinton, there's not much we can do about those folks. But to the reasonable and actionable requests that have been made, we have done, made extremely sincere and well-thought-out efforts to address those points as put forward by both Abutters and by council members. We would just strongly encourage all parties to look at the surrounding uses, what they are on a zoning table is one thing, but what the surrounding property owners, properties are actually utilized for, and take into account that there is a fair amount of commercial activity in and around this area. And just continue to, continue to look at the, at the nature of this project, that this is a property owner that was impacted by a commercial use next door, is now looking to bring a similar commercial, special use to the, to the area, and has made all efforts to abide by the actionable requests of the council members and Abutters. So, thank you for your time this evening.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Steve.
Frank?
Yes?
This is Sylvia. I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Yeah.
All right, first of all, I just want to correct a few things, listening to everything that's been said. Number one, the Shurenzia family bought their property in early 2000s. They could not have known about National Grid, because National Grid didn't come on the radar until five or six years after they bought the property. That's number one. Number two, the revenue is going to be more than $11,250, because if it got approved, it would no longer be classified as residential, it would be classified as commercial, and therefore, commercial properties pay more, they're valued more, so they pay more. So, the assessment would change, and there would be additional revenue. Even, and the other thing is, even though the planning board, some years ago, added, when they worked on the comprehensive plan, they added to the comprehensive plan, I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but basically, that the town should look at residential areas for stole installations. Now, the town has looked at those as they've come before, okay? Old Depot was a no. Brushy Brook was a no. So, that even though the planning board did put that in there, some properties just are not conducive to solar farms for a variety of reasons. And I agree, unfortunately for the family, that this is one of them. The other thing that I want to add is that, for instance, the Route 91 project that went in, you're not going to see it from the first floor of each house. That was a guarantee that the town made when they made the decision to the developers. Those people, when they're on their back deck or in their first floor of their house, they will not see the proposal. And those houses cannot see the proposal from the first floor. Obviously, any solar installation is going to be viewed from the road that, that has access into the project. So, that's ridiculous. So, it's those kind of comments that I just felt strongly that needed to be corrected. And other than that, I move that we close the hearing.
I second it.
Okay, a motion, motion was made to close and seconded. All those in favor of closing the hearing and setting a date for a decision, vote by you saying your name and aye.
Bill Hurst, aye.
Sharon Davis.
Sylvia Thompson, aye.
Barbara Capelbo, aye.
Frank Lindofy, aye. Lisa, what are your thoughts?
You think we can do it by September 1? I mean, the first meeting in September? I meant the first meeting in September.
Which would be September 1.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hold on, Scott. One at a time, please, one at a time.
Sharon Davis speaking. Why can't we do this on the 17th and get it over with?
We need the transcript.
That was my question.
Could you do it the second meeting in September? Because right now, I'm scheduled for work, and hopefully I'll be able to get that Tuesday off. But usually Tuesdays at Walmart, I, I work and I would like to take part in that vote.
What time, what is the second, um, second meeting in September?
I can't understand, everybody's talking over each other.
Yeah, one at a time, please.
Lisa, what is the second meeting in September 21st?
That is the 21st of September.
Think that's adequate. I'm fine with it.
I will still try to get the first meeting in September, which is, I believe it's a Tuesday, and I, Tuesday night, they always schedule me for work at Walmart, and I was trying...
We're talking about a Monday, Scott.
Talking about Monday, the 21st, Scott.
Okay, but the first meeting in September would be...
Labor Day.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, to recap, you have a next, the next few meetings are Monday, August 17th, Tuesday, September 1, and Monday, September 21. Those are the dates that are before you. If you would just let me know which date you prefer, then we'll go forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Steve.
If it's at all possible, the, we would request the most, as soon as the transcript is available, that the council make a decision.
I think that would still be the 21st. We won't have it by August 17th, and September 1 is not appropriate for Scott.
I'm still going to try to get that date off, like 21st.
Let's just do 9/21.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Okay, that's good. Thank you, folks. I guess it's the last item on the agenda. What's that? Scott?
Okay, Mr. President, I thank you for reminding me. I got a number of people I want to adjourn in memory of, and I thank you for that. I make a motion, we adjourn in memory of Hal Edwin Baton, John M. Bridgeron, MD, Darine Albrancato, and Marilyn M. Johnson.
And especially John Lewis.
Already did him, last...
He already did him, he already did.
Last meeting. I would say that Darine Albrancato was my first cousin, she's the oldest of the Hurst grandchildren, and I'm the oldest, and she grew up in Ashaway. And of course, John Bridgeron was my own physician, a longtime doctor at Wood River Health Services.
That's very sad.
And I don't know if there was a second to that.
Second.
Could you repeat the individuals? I have Hal Baton, John Bridgeron, and then I could not hear the rest.
Okay, it was Hal Edwin Baton, John M. Bridgeron, MD, Darine Albrancato, and Marilyn M. Johnson. And I got a sheet, and I'm going to stick it under you to your door, and you'll be able to see it tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
That's even better, Scott. Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good night. Thanks, everyone, for their participation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, good night.
Good night.